We're going to start this evening off with a public hearing. It's a public hearing to consider the recommended changes and additions to following sections of the Planning and Zoning Code. Section 110901, 114101, 114105, 114504A, and 114704D. Is there anybody that wishes to speak in favor of the recommended changes? Mr. Mendel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. As you said, these are text amendments to various sections of the Planning and Zoning Code of the City of Medina. On November 8th, 2018, the Planning Commission reviewed these staff-presented and recommended changes to the zoning code. They -- those various sections relate to site plan review process, some, the I-1 district purpose statement, the I-1 lot development standards, parking schedule for off-street parking for very -- for several specific types of uses, and then the last one is about non-conforming section and how they expire and when. So these were reviewed, as I said, by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission did recommend the amendments to the zoning code. This was presented in front of the Finance Committee of the City Council on December 10th, and it is here for review this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak in favor of the recommended changes to the Planning and Zoning Code? Hearing none. Is there anybody that wishes to speak against the recommended changes or additions to the Planning and Zoning Code? Hearing none. The public hearing is closed. Now if you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we have a substitute clerk. We have Mr. Patton instead of Kathy Patton this evening. I hope you can fill the shoes.
I'll do my best.
I appreciate that. So will the clerk please call the roll?
Heffinger.
Here.
Lamb.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Starcher.
Here.
Coin.
Here.
Reading of the minutes?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January 14, 2019, as prepared and submitted by the clerk.
Second? Is there discussion on the approval of the minutes? Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Motion passes. Six-zero.
Reports of standing committees. The Finance Committee met prior to the council meeting this evening, and again, it'll meet in two weeks. The Health, Safety, and Sanitation Committee, Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I have no report to give, but I'm hoping to schedule a meeting sometime in the first couple of weeks of February. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Properties Committee, Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Properties has a meeting scheduled for this Thursday at 5:30 in the multipurpose room in the basement this -- or January 31st.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Heffinger?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, we will be having a meeting on February 5th at 5:30. We'll be talking about South Broadway, the Brick Street there, on replacing that, and then talking about maybe updating the sidewalk code as well.
Thank you. Watering Utilities Committee, Mr. Starcher?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a meeting scheduled early February. No report at this time.
And Emerging Technologies Committee, Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled and nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Request for council action. We have several for the Finance Committee. We have 1918, the fund transfer request to -- from Fund 108 to Fund 106. 1919 budget amendments. 1920, MCRC sponsorship brochure revision for partner marketing. 1921 expenditure over 15,000, Walter Haverfield. 1922, accept the final plat for Kensington Point. 1923, amend ordinance 19818 for revitalization district. 1928 expenditure for Zirker Technologies for the police. 1929 bids sealing of the city-owned water wells. And 1930 expenditure over 15,000 for MNJ Technologies for the IT department. Streets and Sidewalks Committee also has 1924, South Broadway Reconstruction Project. 1925, update the sidewalk repair plan. 1926, streetlights on Reagan Parkway. And 1927, flashing lights for crosswalks, not at intersection. Reports of municipal officers. Mayor Hanwell?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Martin Luther King Service that was supposed to be held on January 20th was canceled due to inclement weather. The Medina Ministerial Association is the organization that arranged this at the Presbyterian Church, and they're in the process of trying to find another date that's conducive to everybody as well as conducive at the venue. Once I know that, I'll share that with the public and with the council. A couple items on snow removal, not to take too much from Nino, but one is that the City of Medina respectfully requests the community's cooperation in clearing the sidewalks for schoolchildren and other pedestrians in the neighborhood. We'd also ask and recommend that the areas from the curb to the fire hydrants be cleared away and a -- at least a circumference to where the fire hydrants can be seen easily as the snow is piled up, both from folks clearing their own driveways and the roads being cleared. We don't want to waste that precious time trying to figure out where the hydrant is in the snow pile, so anything we could do to cut down that time would be helpful. On the snow removal itself, we've had many compliments on the snow removal program. The Service Director, Nino, and his staff worked nonstop from the early Saturday morning, January 19th, and literally without stopping, although we rotated shifts in and out until 4:00 PM Monday, which is the Martin Luther King holiday. With the single-digit temperatures, the salt was relatively ineffective, which caused the snow to be packed down on the streets, both from the traffic as well as the snowblades continuing to run over the top of it. Once the temperatures rose on Wednesday, the 23rd, the streets were then re-scraped again and salt reapplied. We had a few calls that some streets were not plowed or were plowed once through the entire event, which was simply not accurate. Each of the streets was plowed repeatedly through all of those three days. We did have quite a bit of heavy blowing and thick snow, more snow than we've had probably in decades here. Then what we did in addition to that, besides clearing the streets, is we brought in the Parks hydraulic snow thrower to open up the piles of snow so that the children could get from the sidewalks to cross the streets to the next sidewalk to continue on their ways to school. We had to use backhoes and front-end loaders to remove snow from the square as well as to open up intersections for pedestrian and school walkers just because of the height of the snow from the repeated plowing. The other thing the Service Director did is directed those with smaller pickups who are generally doing our city parking lots, our senior citizen program, that any time they saw neighbors out trying to clear that heavy, thick snow at the bottoms of their driveways with the residents' permission to take the blade and clear out the apron for them. And we assisted numerous people in that regard. So that's the facts of the snow plow program through that entire event. And then, last but not least, I'd like to offer Kim Walter from our Lot Department. Congratulations on her retirement. She is council's first resolution tonight, but at the last minute was not able to attend. And we will present her with that council resolution once you pass it. And last but not least, rather than have council pass a resolution for Sergeant George Horton, I wanted to do a mayor oral proclamation for George because George and I worked many years at the Police Department, and he was a great asset and is a great asset. So George, I'll invite you up now.
So this reads, "City of Medina proclamation. Whereas Sergeant George Horton has faithfully served his fellow citizens as a member of the Medina Police Department for over 27 years, and whereas he became a full-time officer, police officer, December 30th, 1991, whereas he was promoted to the rank of police sergeant on December 19th, 1996, whereas during a long career in public service, Sergeant Horton has made many contributions, including developing the Police Department's K-9 program in the mid-1990s and participating in the training of two K-9 officers as well as supervising them. Whereas Sergeant Horton additionally served the citizens of Medina as the Emergency Services Unit Commander," that was our SWAT team, "for several years prior to the city combining with the Medina County SWAT team. Whereas he will continue to aid the community through service as a special officer with Medina Police Department. Whereas the City of Medina by this recognition wishes to express its great appreciation to Sergeant Horton for his service, loyalty, and dedication to the community on the occasion of his retirement from full-time employment. And now therefore I, Dennis Hanwell, Mayor of the City of Medina, do hereby recognize and commend Sergeant George Horton for his years of dedicated service to the City of Medina and do hereby extend my personal congratulations and best wishes for many more happy and productive years in the future." George, I present this on behalf of the city. God bless you. Impromptu speech. First off, I'd like to thank Chief Kenny, Mayor Hanwell, City Council for this proclamation. They didn't have to do that, and I greatly, greatly do appreciate it. As Mayor Hanwell said, I worked with him -- he was my lieutenant, he was my chief. I worked with Lieutenant -- I'm going to call him Lieutenant Starcher forever. I can't look at him over there sitting in a councilman's seat. That's the most he's talked in his whole career. Denny Simpson through LST. I've worked with Mr. Shields throughout the Healthcare Committee, but many people I've known for most of my career. Most of all, I want to thank the men and women standing in the back back there, past and present. Dan Gatto started the K-9 unit with me. I get credit for some reason for starting it, but it was me and Dan. Dan Warner joined us. The SWAT team was full of Lieutenant Bert Bickler, Dan again, Nate, a bunch of guys. My career was a success because of what they brought to the table. I mean, they were professional, they brought hard work, they brought dedication. It was easy to work with them. It was easy to train them. It was easy to be around them. They were like family. And I thanked them for everything they did for the 28 years that I was here and for keeping me safe and making me go home every night. That was fantastic, and I hope I did the same for them. Lastly, I won't keep you. I got to thank my family. My two daughters, Alyssa and Julia, got to grow up. No one's like to have a police officer as a father. It's not easy. They learned that I am the best driver on the road. Everybody else should just get out of my way. But they had to go through a lot with me being tired at every event that they had and things of that nature, working nights and doing what they did. My parents, George and Alma, but mostly my wife, Michelle, as they call her Saint Michelle. Through all the things that I did in 28 years at this department, it was not easy. She stood by me the whole time and made this job and this life bearable, fun, and I enjoyed every minute of it, and I appreciate the City of Medina giving me the chance to work for them, and it was an honor serving them. Thank you very much. We appreciate all your service, and we hope you don't become a stranger to us. Anybody else want to say something?
Mr. President, thank you. George, we worked over 20 years together. And Michelle, you know that we did a lot together on the job and off the job. Your daughters are beautiful. They've grown into women. They weren't women when we were working. They were little babies, like my daughter, who's now a woman. And everybody here, like he said, the officers, do a great job, but a lot of that is because of the supervision they have. George was a tremendous supervisor. He was one of the best, and I'd just like to congratulate you on years of service, George.
Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. President. George, I had the privilege and the honor of working with you with LST over probably 25 of your 28 years. And the two things that come to my mind when I think of George Horton, number one, was his professionalism. There were several times where we were on the scene with the squad and the police who respond all the time with us was always able to help and willing to help and put themselves out where they didn't need to, to give us a hand to help the members of our community that had fallen ill. The other thing that really stuck in my mind, though, is the times that we -- you were on the scene with us, you and the other officers, where you had to arrest somebody for whatever the reason was. In most cases, 99% of them, 98% of them, just like the other officers that I worked with over the years, I don't think the residents of Medina are -- realize how professional your team is. When asked a couple times over your career, "God, how could you be so nice to those people?" And he goes, "Hey, they made a mistake. You know, they knew that they had to be placed under arrest. They were decent to me. I'm going to be decent to them." That always impressed me, more than you'll ever know. The other thing is when they weren't nice and they needed to be taken into custody along with the other members of your department, I was always glad that you were on the scene. I never had to worry about getting in a tussle myself because I knew that you or one of the other officers were there and very, very capable of handling the situation. The second thing that I wanted to tell you that I enjoyed over our friendship over the years was your sense of humor. I can't get into -- but you've got a great sense of humor, and I know your wife and your daughters know what I'm talking about, and I just, I appreciate it. I'm glad that you've come back as an auxiliary. I wish you the best of luck and the best of health. Thanks, George.
Thank you. Mr. Shields?
Sergeant Horton, I just wanted to thank you too for your years of service protecting everybody, keeping everybody safe in the city. I appreciate your professionalism. I noticed that from the first time I've ever worked with you. You represented the city while you represented the department well, and I just really appreciate that. And then, on a personal note, all the times that alarm went off at a school building in the middle of the night, it was always a comfort to me to know that you were going to be on the scene and helping out, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sergeant Horton, thank you for your years of service. I guess it's a good thing that I never really never had a chance to meet with you on any level, but I do want to thank your family for sharing him and letting him, given all the support he needed too, because I know that's very important. Good luck to you and your future endeavors.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to remind all residents that the City of Medina has an income tax. The income tax is collected by Rita. We have forms available here at City Hall, or you can get those online at Rita, Ohio, and please remember to file. And there are a number of items later on the agenda that originated with finance that I will discuss when we get there.
Thank you. Mr. Huber, Law Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. George, going to miss you not being on the night shift in that we represent the Police Department as attorneys. I have the opportunity to read many, many police reports, and with the advent of video, we are required to actually look and go through many, many of the body cam and dash cam video as to what happens, when it happens. And if you do that as an attorney, you come to have an appreciation for a senior officer's ability to calm a situation, direct the situation in terms of common sense, apply the wisdom necessary to de-escalate highly emotional problems, and put the issue to bed in a way that is good for everybody concerned. And that has been your work on the cases I've seen time and time again, and frankly, our department across the board is exemplary in that regard. We have officers who use their heads and talk, and you see the thread when you read these reports, and I read a lot of them. And the only thing I can say is it's been a privilege as an attorney to represent the department and your cases, and you're going to be missed.
Thank you. Chief Kenny, Police Department?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one announcement. We did make a hire. We hired Tyler Hughes. He's a young man that just finished the academy. He's just recently passed his OPADA certification, so he will be sworn in next week, and he'll start his FTO training period as well, so you'll see him throughout the city. I'd also, of course, like to congratulate George Horton on his retirement. As police officers, we all look forward to that date. There's a bit of jealousy involved in that when somebody gets to retire and begin to collect that pension that we've worked so hard for, and George has definitely worked hard for that pension over the 27, almost 28 years here at Medina Police Department. I'm glad he's returning as a special, so he will not be a stranger and still be involved in the Police Department and all the events that we have. So congratulations, George.
Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report, but I did just want to say also to Sergeant Horton, because we only met briefly, and I'm -- the chief just made me honorary member of the department, so we really didn't get to work together, but I just wanted to thank you for your service and congratulate you on your retirement. And yes, we are all jealous. I hope you have fun and come back and visit us. We'll see you around the campus. Thank you.
Mr. Mendel, Planning and Community Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. George, congratulations on your retirement. I got a long way to go yet, so other than that, I have nothing else. Thank you.
Chief Painter, Fire Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report. George, kudos to you. I've loved working with you on our calls, and I won't be too far behind you here.
Mr. Wright, Recreation Center Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick update. Our next Rec Advisory Board meeting is February 21st, Thursday, at 7:30 in the morning, and then I just want to congratulate Sergeant Horton and Kim Walters on their retirement.
Thank you. Mr. Gladish, Building Official?
I would just like to congratulate George, and I do not have a report. Thank you.
We're going to skip out of line here. Mr. Patton?
City Engineer and Acting Clerk?
I'll wait, I'll wait.
Thank you. Today, we did release the request for proposals to the three design-build teams interested in building our City Hall parking structure. Those will be due back to us in March. We'll analyze that, and hopefully, we can make a decision and award a contract in April. Other than that, I just also wanted to join everyone and say congratulations, George. Always good to work with you, and I hope we see you in the future.
Okay, Mr. Pacoli, Service Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have a report this evening. The mayor took care of that for me. Thank you, Mayor. With regard to the snow and ice event, I do want to acknowledge our guys for working diligently through that long weekend and all the hours and all the departments that worked. Also, congratulations, George. We worked through a lot of winters, had a lot of good laughs, so I know a little bit about what Councilman Simpson was referencing with the sense of humor, so you -- but you always had public safety in mind, and you were really good to work with, especially during the winter storm months and so on. Congratulations, good luck to you.
Okay, confirmation of mayor's appointment. We have Utility Rate Review Commission, Richard Kirby, for a term expiring 12/31/21.
Move to approve the mayor's appointment?
Second. Any discussion on the mayor's appointment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the confirmation of the mayor's appointment?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
It passes six-zero.
Confirmation of council appointment. We have the Archive Commission. We have Matt Readerhold for a term expiring 12/31/21.
Move to confirm council appointment?
Second. Any discussion on the council's appointment? Will clerk please call the roll on the council's appointment?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
Noticees, Communication, Petitions. We have one liquor permit not to object to the stock transfer of a D-1 permit to Salem Barbecue LLC, doing business as Dicky's Barbecue Pit, first floor only at 960 North Court Street.
Move not to object?
Second, not to object?
Any discussion on the liquor permit? Will clerk please call the roll on the transfer liquor permit?
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
I'm finished business. We have none introduction of visitors. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during a portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the chair, and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered in the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, I'm here tonight. Matt Readerhold, 426 East Liberty. I'm here this evening representing Main Street Medina, along with our board members, Kimberly Marshall, Jonathan Mendel, Brad Root, and Kelly Parks up in the top, to thank you for your consideration for renewing your membership with Main Street Medina for $30,000. As we're entering our 12th year of being a nonprofit organization doing work in the city, we're very proud that annually we generate about $1.5 million of economic impact for the city. We've had a wonderful 12 years, going into 12 years, and look forward to working with you on many more events. I'd also like to remind the public that we have First Friday coming up. It's the first Friday of every month from 5 till 9. Special events taking place around the district with stores and restaurants open later. We also have the Medina Ice Festival coming up. 25th Ice Festival is February 15th to the 18th. And then we have Ladies Night Out on March 7th, so we hope to see people uptown shopping and dining and having a good time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council at this time? Okay. Introduction and considerations of ordinances and resolutions. We have Resolution 919, a resolution commending Kimberly Walter for her dedicated years of service to the City of Medina Law Department.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion? Mr. Huber?
Kim Walter has been our primary secretary for as long as I've been the law director, which is since 2001. She served under Bill Young, John Loane, and Tom Phyllis. Our office, I think, is probably the definition of stress. We have deadlines every day. We have hearings and trials every day, and Kim's been the steady rudder through it all. She has a personality where she deals with stressed-out lawyers and manages to keep it all moving forward, and she also puts up with me, or she has pretty well, anyway. And she's going to be missed because I don't know what it's going to be like to walk into the office without Kim there.
Is there any further discussion or comment? 30 years is a long time. Mr. Simpson?
Yes. I didn't know Kim real well. I knew her and her husband. Again, she was always very accessible here at City Hall. If you had a legal question, you're trying to get in touch with Mr. Huber. She tried to dodge that so you wouldn't have to actually meet with him in person. He'd always call you back. I'm only kidding you, Greg. But no, she was -- and I'm going to miss her smiling face, and I wish her the best in her retirement.
I'll second that. I just wanted to say how friendly and helpful and just did a great job, and Greg, we appreciate her for keeping you in line and...
That was a challenge here. Any other discussion? Mr. Starcher?
Mr. President, Mr. Huber, I don't know if you understand how much work she saves you, because when you call over there, she, her legal advice and her professional advice probably outweighs yours in some respect, so she has saved you a lot of work over the years.
Any additional council comments? Will clerk please call the roll in adoption of the resolution?
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
It passes six-zero.
Ordnance 1019, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Cleveland Clinic Medina Hospital Life Support Team for the purpose of providing the Cleveland Clinic Medina Hospital Life Support Team for the purpose of providing 911 dispatch services.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved add at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on emergency clause and the ordinance. Chief Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a contract that we're requesting permission for the mayor to sign. This is for dispatch services to LST.
And reason for the emergency clause?
The emergency clause is requested because this contract started January 1st. So, we're requesting the emergency clause for this.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance and/or the emergency clause? Would a clerk please call the roll in adoption of the emergency clause?
Hefinger?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Would a clerk please call the roll in adoption of the ordinance?
Coin?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Resolution passes 6-0.
Ordinance 1119, ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Medina Township for the purpose of providing 911 emergency police dispatch and communication services on behalf of the residents of the township.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved add at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on emergency clause and ordinance. Chief Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is also for a contract for dispatch services to Medina Township. The emergency clause is requested for this as well. The prior contract expired December 31st.
Any further discussion on emergency clause or ordinance? Would a clerk please call the roll in adoption of the emergency clause?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Would a clerk please call the roll in adoption of the ordinance?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Motion? Resolution passes 6-0.
Ordinance 1219, ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Montville Township for the purpose of providing 911 emergency police dispatch and communication services on behalf of the residents of the township.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved add at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Chief Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is for police dispatch contract for Montville Township. The emergency clause is requested. The prior contract expired December 31st, 2017.
Any further discussion on emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Would a clerk please call the roll on adoption of the emergency clause?
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Would a clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Ordinance passes 6-0.
Ordinance 1319, an ordinance amending Section 91704 of the codified ordinances of the City of Medina, Ohio, relative to the water rates.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. Late last year, Avon Lake Municipal Utilities informed us of increases that will be applied to what we pay them effective in July of 2019, July of 2020, and July of 2021. This ordinance will pass those increases on because we are in a long-term contract with Avon Lake Municipal Utilities, so we will have to pay those increased rates.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Would a clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Ordinance passes 6-0.
Resolution 1419, a resolution adopting the Housing Revolving Loan Fund Administration Agreement between the State of Ohio Department of Services Agency and the City of Medina, Ohio, relative to the Community Housing Improvement Program.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved add at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and resolution. Mr. Mendel?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you said, this is to start another agreement with the State of Ohio for a housing revolving loan fund. Our current, our past one had expired at the end of '18. And in order to get one again with the state to reinvest and reuse money that comes back through CHIP program funds, we have to set up another agreement to establish the new revolving loan fund. So, the emergency clause is requested, as we would need to set this up as soon as possible. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the resolution or the emergency clause? Would a clerk please call the roll in adoption of the emergency clause?
Hefinger?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Would a clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Coin?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Resolution passes 6-0.
Ordinance 1519, an ordinance authorizing the payment of $30,000 to Main Street Medina for the city's 2019 membership renewal.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mayor Hamwell?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a annual payment of the City of Medina to the Main Street program. Matt shared the economic benefit and all of the positive things that Main Street is doing for the City of Medina. I respectfully ask council's passage of this.
Thank you. And I also like to add that Main Street has done a fantastic job with all the events on the square. The vitality of this square is, has changed 180 degrees since I first joined council. And as you can tell, the, most of, around most, all of the storefronts are filled, and we're trying to look to expand for additional storefronts, so that we can have Main Street fill those also. But we appreciate all the help of the board, and Matt, yourself, you do a great job. Any additional council comments? Would a clerk please call the roll in adoption of the ordinance?
Hefinger?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Ordinance passes 6-0.
Ordinance 1619, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a tenant-based rental assistance agreement with Medina Metropolitan Housing Authority, MMHA, for the fiscal year 2018 Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program, CHIP.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you said, this would be setting up an activity that's within our current CHIP program. Our current CHIP grant is with the City of Medina and City of Brunswick in partnership. As part of that, there is dollars allocated to tenant-based rental assistance, which should be administered through MMHA. So, this $33,000 would set up that agreement with MMHA, so we can provide these dollars to the persons in our household that need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Would a clerk please call the roll in adoption of the ordinance?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Starcher?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.